Welcome, everyone, to the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. It is Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, 2:00 p.m. in Conference Room 325 here at the State Capitol. We're here for considering numerous measures. Appreciate everyone being here to testify. If you're testifying, please limit your testimony to just a couple of minutes. I'll ask you to summarize at that point. If you're testifying on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify, and then after your testimony is complete as well. Use the Zoom chat function if you need to chat with our technical staff, with technical issues only. If you are disconnected, don't panic, just join us as soon as you can, rejoin us, and then I'll try to fit you in if possible. If the power goes off here in the building and we have to reschedule the meeting, we'll make sure to post appropriate notice, and hopefully the fire alarm is not going to go off. If you're testifying on Zoom, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images. That kicks us off of YouTube, which is not good because we want the public to see what's going on here. Please conduct yourself with aloha and refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. It's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. That's my wish. So first up, let's, just so everyone knows, we're going to take the first measure for testimony, and then I'm going to take two other measures out of order. We're going to move Senate Bill 1337, S.D. 1, Stadium Authority, up to the number two position, and then we'll take Senate Bill 289 relating to Ethics Administrative Fines to the number three position. So first up, Senate Bill 176, Senate Draft 1, relating to recounts. This measure allows for ballots designated by the county clerks for inclusion to be included in the initial tabulation. Prohibits ballots that the county clerks initially determine are deficient or need additional time to be corrected or verified from being included in the initial tabulation. And the bill increases the minimum threshold required to trigger an automatic recount. First up, we have Scott Nago, State of Hawaii, Office of Elections. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Scott Nago, Office of Elections. When I stand on my written testimony, just state that this bill would allow or would set, would clarify that the recounts are triggered off of the initial election day results rather than an arbitrarily six o'clock a.m. next day time limit. So, for example, in the 2022 general election, we recounted Senate District 22, but if we followed the strict sense of the law at 6:00 a.m. the next day, it wouldn't have been in the threshold to recount it. It was only after all the ballots were added in that were received on election day and validated that it became in the trigger for an automatic recount. So we're asking that you just allow us to trigger to be, the trigger to be on the final report on election day rather than the six o'clock, six o'clock report.
So you like the bill?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. We've received a total of three testimonies in support, 42 in opposition, and one with comments. There's only one other person that said that they wished to testify, and that's Mary Healy on Zoom, not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 176, Senate Draft 1? If not, questions, members? Nope, all set. Thank you, Director. Let's move on to the number two, which is the last item on our agenda. We're moving it up out of deference to busy folks who are here for this measure. Senate Bill 1337, Senate Draft 1, relating to the Stadium Authority. This measure clarifies requirements to establish a quorum to do business and validate acts of the Stadium Authority. And on this, we have Mr. Chris Sadeasu, D.Bed Stadium Authority. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Representative Shimizu. Appreciate this opportunity to testify in support of this administrative bill. Appreciate that the Senate passed this and crossed this over, and appreciate you hearing this, and we stand in our testimony and support. Thank you.
Could you highlight why this bill is important to you? You've been trying for three years now.
Yes, thank you.
Why is this so important?
So we have nine voting members of our board, and it's eight seated right now, and we also have two ex-official, non-voting members. So the nonspecificity in the statute has been interpreted that a quorum of the entire membership, which is 11 total with the non-voting, is now six. But with, just on the voting, as the change of this bill proposes, it'll be the quorum be five based on the nine.
And that's important because?
To carry out business, oftentimes we struggle to have quorum of the voting members.
Great.
Thank you.
Trying to make sure everyone understands why this bill is important. Thank you very much, Mr. Sadeasu.
Thank you.
We've also received written testimony from the Director of Department of Business and Economic Development, Turism. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in Senate Bill 1337, Senate Draft 1? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thank you very much. Let's now move to Ethics. Senate Bill 289 relating to Ethics Administrative Fines. This measure establishes uniform provisions for the assessment of administrative penalties under the State Ethics Code and lobbyist law. First up, we have the Vice State Ethics Commission, Mr. Robert Harris.
Good afternoon, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Shimizu. Thank you so much for taking this bill out of order. I'll try to be brief. This is similar to the House bill that also passed out of the House and went to the Senate. The intent here is to essentially allow sort of small issues with enforcement that where the facts and law may not be in dispute. It's allowing them to be resolved quicker. The idea is we're preserving the exact same due process rights, but we're just allowing it for both respondent and for the state, the ability to move through these things a little bit faster, which hopefully will save time and effort by everybody. So we think it's a great bill and fully support it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is Mr. Maseki on line? Not present. He also sent in testimony in support. If he does join us, let me know. I would offer him an opportunity to testify. Anyone else wishing to testify in Senate Bill 289? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Could you tell me if Mr. Morsi from LRB is on Zoom? No? Okay, so we'll wait on that. When he does join, if you could let me know. Thanks. Okay, let's go back to the top of the agenda. Number two bill on the agenda. Senate Bill 311, Senate Draft 1, proposing an amendment to the Hawaii State Constitution regarding the freedom of speech. This measure proposes an amendment to the Hawaii State Constitution to provide that freedom of speech protected under the Hawaii State Constitution does not include the expenditure of money to influence elections. First up, we have written testimony from Pride at Work Hawaii and from League of Women Voters of Hawaii, and we have Ms. Kat Brady here in person from Community Alliance on Prisons in support. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. That was loud. Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair.
It won't bite. It's okay.
I'm Kat Brady, testifying in strong support of this measure for Community Alliance on Prisons. You know, I think we've all seen the damage that too much money does to elections. It really subverts the public voice, and this bill is really, really important, especially at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brady. Next person who said they wish to testify is Greg Maseki. Is he online? No. So he sent comments. And Mary Healy on Zoom? No, not present. She testified in opposition. There's a total of 14 testimonies in support, 35 in opposition, one with comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in Senate Bill 311, Senate Draft 1? Oh, yes, please. If you could come up, and if you submitted testimony, I just didn't know you were going to be here. So please introduce yourself.
My name is Margaret Mejia. I'm from Hawaii Christian Coalition. I did not submit written testimony, but I would still like to give a little testimony.
Please proceed.
Okay, I represent 35,000 members, approximately 130,000 people on all islands, and the reason why we oppose SB 311 is I think it's a very serious thing to change any constitution, change the constitution, period. Our United States Constitution's been around over 230 years. They haven't made any changes to it. I think instead you could propose a bill or, you know, some other legislation, but to change the constitution is a serious thing. So we are opposed to SB 311.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, please, provide your name and organization to our dedicated staff member here, Charlotte. That'd be great. Great. And if you'd like to testify next, please. If you could introduce yourself and proceed.
I am Terry Armbruster, and Chair Tarnas and committee members, I oppose Senate Bill 311 because, just like the other person, a testifier, said, amending the constitution should not be taken lightly, and for, I think there should be a separate bill regarding the funding or trying to influence elections by, with money, because that, we should not change the constitution for something like that. The constitution's a place for, to protect a lot of freedoms, but this one relating to the funding or trying to put money on influencing elections should not be in the constitution. That should be a separate bill. So again, I request that you would vote no to this constitutional amendment and preserve our constitution the way it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brett Colbus on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Tarnas and committee members. My name is Brett Colbus, 26-year Navy veteran who live in Eva Beach. I strongly oppose SB 311. While the intent to address concerns about money in politics is understandable, this bill raises serious constitutional issues and will have unintended consequences. This bill will play Hawaii's constitution at odds with the U.S. Constitution and establish federal precedent. The U.S. Supreme Court has consistently held that political spending is a form of protected speech. This amendment will lead to legal challenges. Restricting political spending as proposed could limit the ability of individuals and groups to perpetuate interconstitutional republic process. It may disproportionately affect grassroots organizations and smaller campaigns that rely on pooled resources to get their message out. This constitutional amendment is overly broad and will have far-reaching implications beyond its intended scope that will restrict legitimate forms of political expression and advocacy infringing on fundamental First Amendment rights. For these reasons, I urge you to vote no on SB 311.
Thank you very much. Dave Molenix on Zoom?
Hey, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Hi, Dave Molenix, our realist in Hawaii, representing our 5,000 members statewide. We stand in strong support of this. Money in politics has been a huge problem. We actually have amended the constitution many times to update it, to reflect what's really happening in the world at the current moment. And getting money out of politics is essential. It's, we can look at the White House right now, who's in office, it's because billionaires bought the presidency. So getting money out of politics is essential. Thank you so much. Please support this bill.
Thank, thank you very much. Michael Goluy?
Good afternoon, Michael Goluy, Jr., President of Pride at Work Hawaii, he/him pronouns. We stand in strong support of this measure because money is not speech. Being able to go out and buy airway and influence elections, it just says that as long as you have a billion dollars, you can do whatever you want. It's not fair to the little people, and this, the intended consequences of this bill is to ensure that we can't have billionaires swoop in and buy elections, as we've seen happen. So we encourage you to pass this out, let the people decide, and amend our constitution to reflect the will of the people. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. And John Morsi on Zoom, do you wish to testify on this measure? Okay, okay. No, okay. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Ah, yes. Come on up, please. Introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, committee members. Cameron Hurt, State Director for Common Cause Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this measure. We know that money in politics is something that our founding fathers fought against. Had they not, they would have selected an oligarch or a king to rule them. We know that we fight every day to make sure that it's one voice, one vote, not $1, one vote. If we don't take proactive measures, we could be on a slippery slope to oligarchy in all reality. So it's for that reason and many more that Common Cause Hawaii is, of course, in strong support of this measure. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurt. One more try, Mary Healy on Zoom? Nope. Anyone else wishing to testify? Yes, please come on up and introduce yourself.
Great, yes. Evan Weber with our Hawaii. I also just wanted to add a few comments in strong support of this measure. Wanted to say that in addition to the great points that Cameron made, our constitution here in Hawaii has been changed many times, and in fact, has been around since the 1800s. And when it was created, they actually built in processes to evaluate whether it should be changed every 10 years. So there was an acknowledgement that constitutions are things that need to change with the times and respond to new political moments, like Citizens United decision from the U.S. Supreme Court, and just the influence of big money in politics in general. So, you know, constitutions change, and also the U.S. Constitution has been changed for many notable reasons, including the three-fifths clause, which legalized slavery in the United States. So constitutions absolutely do need to change, and this is a great reason to change ours.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? On Zoom or in person? If not, questions, members? Representative Shimizu, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I'm disappointed that we don't have any legal representation since this is regarding the constitution, and I'd like to hear them weigh in on the legality of this bill, because as I understand it, it's a federal jurisdiction with the Citizens United case, and don't get me wrong, I'm all for campaign reform. I campaigned on that, and am for total public funding of campaigns. I just don't see, besides making a statement, this bill really making a difference except introducing more legal interpretation conflict. So I ask.
There's no one to ask a question.
No one to ask, but you raising your hand, ma'am?
No, no, it's, you.
Okay.
I am from the Attorney General's office.
Oh, you are.
So I can take a question back for you if that's what you are asking. I'm sorry, I'm Candace Park, Deputy Attorney General.
Okay, so I'm so thankful that you are a person there and being here. My question is for the Attorney General to weigh in on any legal aspects of this bill and any problems that it may introduce or present for us.
Thank you.
Okay, she'll follow up. She says she'll take it back to the A.G. and get back to you.
Okay, I didn't catch that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so generally, if we do find problems in any of the bills, then we would be submitting testimony to that regard. We, I, this bill was assigned to me, and it's only going to take, have an effect if the Buckley case and the Citizens United cases are overturned. Even if those cases are overturned, we wouldn't need the, our constitution to be amended in order to reap the benefit of the decision to overturn those cases. So for that reason, we did not submit testimony. Does that make sense?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is unless those two cases get overturned, it's not going to make a difference, and if they do get overturned, then we don't have to do anything because it will, the overturning of those cases will set the course and guidelines.
Correct.
Thank you, understood. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any other questions? If not, thanks very much to the testifier. That was on the spot. Legal opinion? Thank you very much, Ms. Park.
I'm going to get in trouble for that.
All right. If there's no other questions, thanks. We will move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 780 relating to elections. This measure specifies that election ballots issued by the chief election officer or county clerk shall exclude any candidate who is disqualified by a constitutional or statutory provision. It provides for a process for challenging an inclusion or exclusion of a candidate from a ballot, and includes a candidate's disqualification as grounds for an election contest complaint. It specifies that electors of presidential and vice presidential candidates shall not be individuals who are disqualified by a constitutional or statutory provision. First up, we have, first person who said they wish to testify is Brett Colbus on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, members. Again, Brett Colbus, 26-year Navy veteran living in Eva Beach. I strongly oppose SB 780. This is just a repackaged version of SB 2392 from last year, which this committee did not give a hearing. It raises the same concerns as it did last year. It undermines the fundamental election principle that voters should decide who is fit for office. It enables the exclusion of candidates based on arbitrary disqualification determinations that limit voter choice. It places unnecessary burdens on Hawaii's courts and election officials, potentially delaying election results and eroding public confidence in the electoral process. It opens the door for misuse where disqualification challenges could be weaponized against political opponents, further polarizing Hawaii's political landscape and undermining fair competition. The criteria for disqualification are broad, including reference to constitutional provisions such as Section 3 of the 14th Amendment. Without clear definitions or safeguards, it will lead to inconsistent application and confusion among voters. I urge you, this committee, to, again, reject SB 780 like you did last, last year with SB 2392. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. And the next person that said they wish to testify is Mary Healy on Zoom? Not present. Anyone else wishing to testify in Senate Bill 780? Yes, please, come on up.
Aloha, my name is Margaret Mejia. I'm representing Hawaii Christian Coalition. We represent, we have 35,000 members and represent about 130,000 people on all islands. We are in opposition to this bill because we believe that voters should be able to decide who to vote for with no obstacles, and I don't know if this is the correct procedure, but that I would like to add the testimony of Brett Colbus as our own.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You must listen to us on the floor when we do that, yeah, yeah. But I appreciate the sentiment, though, and I'm sure Mr. Colbus appreciates the deference there, affirmation of his testimony. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify in 780? If not, questions, members? Yes, Representative Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for my A.G. friend over there. My understanding is the federal government has sole authority over qualifications of candidates for federal office, so this measure would apply only to state offices. Would that be correct?
I'm sorry, this bill was not assigned to me, so I can take a question. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, this bill was not assigned to me, so I can take a question back for you, but I, I cannot answer your question at this point.
Right, right. So even if it was, wasn't assigned to you, you don't have that answer in your library? Okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you want me to follow up, though?
Um, yeah, please.
Okay, so if you could just repeat the question again?
Um, my understanding is, the federal government has sole authority over qualifications of candidates for federal office. So therefore, this measure would apply only to state, our state, I guess, and county also. And I just wanted to confirm if that's a, a correct understanding.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Should I reply to?
You can send it to me, and then I can provide it to the, the members.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill one zero three zero, Senate Draft Two relating to elections. This measure specifies that the practice of election fraud intimidation includes carrying an un concealed firearm or dangerous instrument at or within two hundred feet of a voter's service center, place of deposit, or polling place. First up, uh, we have Michael Goloye.
Uh, I got Michael Goloye Jr., President of Pride at Work Hawaii. He, him pronouns. We stand in strong support of this measure. Uh, there's no reason that there, anybody needs to bring a gun with them or any kind of lethal weapon when going to vote or doing, or dropping off a ballot at one of the deposits. Uh, so we encourage you to pass this bill. Uh, intimidation has no place in our, uh, electoral process, and we need to make sure that people are able to vote freely and securely without, without threat of violence. So we ask you to pass this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Rice on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair. Uh, Michael Rice, testifying on behalf of myself. Frankly, this bill is unnecessary. It, some, it's brandishing weapons and even firearms openly is currently against the law no matter where you are. Uh, this also would have some unintended consequences with the recent laws that changed, uh, regarding deadly weapons, like for, or even just other weapons, like I carry a baton for self-defense pretty much whenever I leave my yard. If, uh, you know, if I go within two hundred feet of a polling station and even though I, I usually keep this concealed, it doesn't conceal very well with my body frame. So would I be threatening someone if I'm just going past a drop box with this? There's, it's simple possession, there's no intent. And I believe there's a fatal flaw in this as well with this bill. It doesn't exempt police officers or security guards who really are the only people who can walk around legally and openly with firearms, nor should I think it should exclude them. Then because, you know, what stops an HPD officer from putting on a MAGA hat, standing in front of a drop box and just, like, just standing there with his gun, you know, saying that he's just on duty? All right, I believe that's it for my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Michael Older on Zoom, not present, writing testimony in support. Next person is Mary Healy on Zoom, not present, testifying in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Uh, we received a total of twelve testifiers, test, testimony in support, thirty-nine in opposition. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on Senate Bill one zero three zero, Senate Draft Two? Yes, please.
Thank you very much. My name's Margaret Mejia. I'm representing Hawaii Christian Coalition. Um, I think you already know the numbers. Okay. Um, so yes, we're in opposition to SB ten thirty. Um, we believe it's, um, not a threat, but it's just a simple possession. We support the Second Amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thanks very much to the testifiers. Let's go ahead to the next measure. Senate Bill one two two five, proposing an amendment to Article seventeen, Section three of the Hawaii Constitution to specify that the standard for voter approval of a constitutional amendment proposed by the legislature is a majority of all the votes tallied upon the question. And that would not include blank, spoiled, and overvotes in determining whether a majority was reached. On this measure, we have testimony from the Hawaii State LGBTQ+ Commission on Zoom. Kathleen Odell in support, not present. Next, we have Michael Goloye.
Aloha again, Michael Goloye Jr., President of Pride at Work, he, him pronouns. We stand in strong support of this measure, uh, because as we, as we just saw last year, the confusion of a blank vote being counted as a no vote doesn't make any sense. And it was hard to explain that to voters, that if you didn't want to have an opinion on it, you should be allowed to not have an opinion, and that should not impact the, whether an amendment passes or not. It should require a, and an overvote counting as a no vote does, makes no sense at all either. So we encourage you to clear this up for once and for all, so people know that a yes vote means a yes, a no vote means a no, and if you want to take a pass, you're not impacting the outcome of it either way. Uh, and so, because it just, it was so hard, it was such a difficult lift, and it has always been that difficult lift. And anybody who's ever ran a campaign for ConAM knows that. And so, uh, we encourage you, especially when it, I, let me rephrase, uh, especially when you have a question that has ambiguity in it or a double negative, uh, people will sometimes pass on that. And so therefore, that, that is not them actually making a decision, yes or no. And so we encourage you to pass this measure, clean this up, make it clear, yes means yes, no means no, and if you don't want to vote, it doesn't, it doesn't go to yeses, it doesn't go to nos, it just, uh, is taken out of the equation altogether. So again, we encourage you to pass this, um, this, uh, and to send it to the people to decide. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, on Zoom, we have Abby Simmons, Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, not present, testified in support. Next, we have Terry Armbruster, in person.
Hello, I'm Terry Armbruster. And Chair Tarnas and committee members, thank you for allowing me to testify. And I am strong opposition to SB twelve twenty-five, because I don't, we should not amend the Constitution and lower the threshold for, um, amendment ratification. All votes matter, and including, um, blank votes, because there are many reasons why there's a blank vote. Sometimes the wording in the amendment is vague and unclear, and other times, they may agree with one portion of the bill, one portion of the amendment, and disagree with another portion, so they cannot give a definitive yes or no. And also, um, also, some of them, there, it's unclear about what the real intent or consequences of the amendment. So that's why they want to abstain, and I, I strongly propose that it still remain a blank vote, remain no. And the reason for that is that you can revisit the amendment when you would have a clearer, be clear and concise, so there's no doubt or confusion what the true intent of the amendment is and the real consequences for making that amendment. And that would make it better, so people could give a definitive yes or no. So right now, I propose that you vote no against this and, um, and vote no on SB twelve twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Mary Healy on Zoom, not present, testifying in opposition. We have received a total of twelve testimonies in support, forty in opposition. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? First, please, go ahead first, ma'am?
Aloha, my name is Margaret Mejia, and I'm representing Hawaii Christian Coalition. And we strongly oppose SB one two two five. Um, it's a serious thing to change the Hawaii State Constitution. Our United States Constitution has been around for over two hundred and thirty years with no changes to it. Please don't make any changes to our Constitution. You can introduce bills and make laws, but please do not touch our Hawaii State Constitution. Also, last week, we spoke to a group in Wauhua, and they were very confused about blank votes. We got lots of questions on these constitutional amendments. Yes, lots of them do have double negatives. Right there is very confusing, but we'd like to ask that you still, um, keep blank votes as a no, uh, because that's not as confusing for people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Cameron Hurt. Common Cause. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Um, I submitted my testimony, but I submitted it at like noon, so maybe it's later, but, um, just want to make sure you guys have the written part. Um, we're in strong support of this bill, um, having worked on a constitutional amendment. Yes has a specific meaning. No has a specific meaning. Me not checking either has a specific meaning. Sometimes people abstain from these votes because they feel like they may affect a community that they're not a part of disproportionately than it will themselves and their own. Therefore, they're leaving it up to their citizens who are more informed, and it's going to be more impactful for them. There's nothing wrong with doing that. But while we're taking a blank vote and saying that blank vote now means no, we're changing, we're assuming the intent of that voter to mean no, rather than the ambiguity that they left it in. Leave the voter's decision in the voter's hands. If they want to put no, they will put no. They want to put yes, they'll put yes. But it is extremely, um, confusing when doing a campaign from an organizing standpoint and a public standpoint. This was something, a lot of feedback we got back that leaving it blank, some would have preferred to leave it blank and not have it count anyway. So again, we're just asking that their voice and their choice to not check either be respected. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I, it's not listed as the one that we received. If you could just make sure that you, you do have it? We got it. Okay, we got it. Hold on just a second, let me just see if it's in this list here. Okay, um, and I, anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill one two two five? Yes, please, come on up.
Yes, I'm Terry Armbruster. And again, um, I oppose SB twelve twenty-five, and specifically, this seems to be a very contentious thing about the blank votes. And I think it should be incumbent upon the people that are trying to amend the Constitution to make sure the wording is clear, concise, and the true intent of the amendment is made clear, so there's no doubt, no confusion, and they know the real consequences for making this amendment. So I think it's more incumbent to do that rather than just, um, keeping the yes or no. You should be incumbent upon the amenders to be clear and concise in their wording. So there will be a definitive yes and no. So thanks again. I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Armbruster. Anyone else wishing to testify, Senate Bill one two two five? Oh, Brett, Brett Colbus.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't intending to, uh, testify on this one, but having hearing some of the conversation and testimony, I, I felt the need to. I, I'm neither for or against this resolution, because I understand that while it may pass out of the legislature, it still has to go to the people to, uh, be approved, and the, the, the no vote, the, the blank votes would be still considered no votes until it gets approved. Uh, I would also like to add that, you know, we do the same thing for elected office. Blank votes, spoiled votes, overvotes are not counted towards the elected office. So, uh, so I don't think it should be, uh, my personal opinion is, it shouldn't be a majority of all the votes, it should be a two-thirds majority of all the votes in the affirmative, uh, just like it is for the, uh, U.S. Constitution, where two-thirds of the states have to ratify any amendments to the U.S. Constitution. I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? If not, questions, members? Representative Mizu?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a question for Mike Golov, Gol, Golovich?
Goloye.
I'm sorry.
Goloye.
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 How about Goloye?
Sorry, we're getting it, Michael, sorry. Goloye.
Thank you, thank you, Michael, for, um, allowing me to, um, mispronounce your name. I'm very sorry.
The people that know me for decades, they still mispronounce it.
I'll call you Mike. But, um, anyway, uh, thank you for your work. Um, we may disagree on things, but, um, I, I, I understand inclusion is very important. So the question that I have is, would you say that the people who leave, left it blank or, well, let's just say the people who left it blank, uh, that they were maybe undecided to, to vote whether yes or no? And that was the reason?
Yeah, they, some people didn't understand the question, so they left it blank. They didn't want, they didn't realize that by leaving it blank, they were actually voting no. Um, and they didn't understand the question. In some cases, we, um, people don't turn the ballot over, and they don't see the questions. And so they don't even realize that those questions are there.
Sorry, Mike, I want to interrupt you, because I, I've pointed questions, and I, I want to get to the point. So basically, if, if it is blank, it is a possibility that the voter was undecided. He didn't know whether to vote yes or no, and he left it blank on purpose. Would, would that be a fair statement?
For some people, yes.
Okay.
And not fair.
I, I'm glad we can agree on that. So i- if we, um, discard these blank votes, overvotes, spoiled votes, people who went to the poll, they made a, they, they registered to vote, they made the effort to go to the polling place or, or mail in their ballot, um, they're, they're an important person. And, and a- as your organization, uh, tries to represent each person, they, they had a, they had a vote, and for whatever reason, it, it wasn't a specific yes, or it wasn't a specific no. So if we discard these people, are we discounting them and dis- disenfranchising them by just totally ignoring them?
Absolutely not. We're not to start, we're not disenfranchising anybody. They had their opportunity to vote the way they wanted to, they chose to leave it blank, and when we go to, and, and with this measure passes, it will be just like with an elected official. They don't count the no, they don't count a, a blank vote against either one of you, any, either you or your opponent. It's just not counted. The same thing with our constitutional amendments. If they don't choose not to be part of this, for whatever reason, we should, we don't want to ignore their choice not to be part of it. And that's what you, you'd be doing by forcing them, by, by counting a blank vote as a no, you're forcing them to make a decision that they may not, may not choose to make. And I don't think that's the government's responsibility or, um, wherewithal to do, make that happen.
Uh, last question, Chair. So based on that, I, I agree with you. We shouldn't, uh, read into their, their thoughts. So maybe what we could do, would you be open to creating a third undecided vote?
It's not the bill.
That's left for better, better minds than mine. Um, but yeah, I always, I think the more options, the better, if that's something.
Okay, thank you. And I thank the Chair's indulgence. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your questions.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Ms. Mija? Ms. Mija? I have a question. So one thing I really appreciated about mail-in voting is the opportunity to spend time with the ballot and to really scrutinize the questions and do research and, and do homework. Um, and I'm wondering, you know, I, I think, I, I hear your objections about, um, lack of certainty and confusion.
Yes.
Um, and I think, you know, as a former teacher, I, I think that it is important that people, um, come to clarity about their decisions. But it does seem to me that if we are getting our ballots, um, two weeks, usually about two weeks before, um, they need to be deposited, um, do you not think that that's adequate time to do research on the question and, um, do your due diligence as a voter? Because I, I think of voting as like, you know, this context of rights and responsibilities. So for me, it's about, um, asking the voters and to uphold their responsibilities. So I'm wondering if you, if you think that that two weeks is not enough for people to understand, and, and I'm wondering if, if you do think that, then why?
For me, two weeks is fine. For the average person, probably not, because they're working, they're doing all different kinds of things. I, if, on the day of election, my phone is just ringing off the hook, and my text is just blowing up because people have questions. And most of the time, nine times out of ten, they're about the questions regarding constitutional amendments. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sure, thank you. Thanks very much. Any other questions, members? If not, thanks, we're going to move on to the next measure. Senate Bill one five one five, Senate Draft One relating to elections. This allows an on-call circuit judge in the relevant circuit to perform the duties of the Board of Registration for purposes of hearing elections disputes if the Board of Registration lacks full membership. It requires the judiciary to designate one or more on-call circuit court judges in each circuit to perform the duties of the Board of Registration for purposes of hearing elections disputes. First up, we have the judiciary in opposition in written First up, we have the judiciary in opposition and written testimony, and we have one individual in support with written testimony. Is there anyone wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1515? If not, question, no one to ask questions of, so we'll move on to the next measure.
I have questions for judiciary.
Yeah, they didn't show up. Sorry. So you can read their testimony.
Okay.
Senate Bill 1202 relating to campaign finance. This measure allows campaign funds to be used for a candidate's childcare and vital household dependent care costs under certain conditions. On this measure, we have Campaign Spending Commission in support.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair. Members, Kristin Nizumi-Nietal, Executive Director, Campaign Spending Commission. We are in support of this bill. Although we maintain that such use of campaign funds would be permitted under 11 dash 381 as costs appear to be directly related to their campaign, we did issue two advisory opinions which would support this um, language and therefore um, we um, support this bill and are available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, next person who wishes to testify is Anne Frederick, Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. Not present. Yes?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you don't get to do that here. Come on up to the rostrum, introduce yourself and your organization and give me the highlights of your testimony.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi. My name is Aria Juliet Castillo. I am um, the Reclaiming Democracy Program Coordinator for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. I'm here representing HOPA. We stand on our testimony for 1030, SB 1032, um, taking public, what is it, taking, um, I'm so sorry, taking foreign influence out of campaign money?
We're on childcare. So you're not testifying this one?
I'm so sorry, I did not submit testimony for this.
Okay.
We support it.
Any, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Cameron, Cameron, you're listed here. Yeah, we got you listed on this one.
I would, I would like to stand on my written testimony, but um, I would just summarize it, Chair, as uh, you know, we just think that if, if people are raising their campaign funds and this is an expenditure that they're going to incur while campaigning, let them use it. Um, we, we know that there, we want a diverse candidate pool to be able to choose from people with different experiences from all walks of life. Um, this bill stands to disproportionately benefit women, but I also personally also want to say something for the single fathers out there who also this bill could stand to help as well as aunties and uncles and grandmothers and, and alike who all step up and to care for. So be that as it may, we feel like a kid should never be a handicap. And again, if they can raise the money for it, let the people be able to pay for childcare. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Um, we received a total of nine testimonies in support, zero in opposition. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1202? If not, questions, members? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Senate Bill 345 relating to public financing. This is the Senate's version of a partial public financing bill. Increases the maximum amount, um, substantially more uh, of an increase than the House version. So first up, we have Campaign Spending Commission, Kristin Nizumi-Nietal.
Good afternoon, thank you again, Chair, members. Um, well, Kristin Nizumi-Nietal, Executive Director, Campaign Spending Commission. We support the intent of the bill but have um, concerns regarding the funding. Of course, we prefer our bill, um, House Bill 370, but um, uh, this bill increases the amount of funds available to qualified candidates participating in the partial public funding program by increasing the expenditure limit by 20% and raising the maximum amount of public funds available from 10 or 15% of the expenditure limit to 67% of the expenditure limit. Um, it also increases the matching fund ratio from um, two to one. Um, so under this bill, I think we tried to set forth um, some, an example um, of a qualified candidate. Just so you guys know that what this bill would do would provide up to $10 million, um, $298,546 in the primary and the same amount of money in the general election. Therefore, um, aggregating a $20 million, $597,092, $92 total amount, which I'd like you guys to know, um, is even more than Senate Bill 51, which is also uh, to be discussed on this, um, at this meeting, this hearing, which addresses comprehensive public funding. So this is a partial public funding program that exceeds the comprehensive public funding program. Um, and I guess I need to let you know that um, there's only 2.1, 2.2 million in the trust fund, so we don't have the money for this. And we'd ask that you re, um, reinsert the appropriation amounts to include the positions that we need um, for this kind of program to um, be able to be successful. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, try again, Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. House Bill 3, or Senate Bill 345.
I'm ready now, thank you. Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and members of the committee. My name is Aria Juliet Castillo. I'm the Reclaiming Democracy Program Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action and the co-founder of Kulian Academy, a leadership development program that encourages people to run for public office. HOPA strongly supports SB 345, which strengthens and expands the state's public partial, partial public campaign financing system, increasing the match and the funds for the program. At Kulian Academy, our goal is to inspire everyday working people to serve as elected officials. One of the biggest challenges they face is paying for their campaign. We constantly hear the same concerns, how much is this going to cost? How do people afford to do this? And the truth is that most can't. Unless they're independently wealthy or have corporate backing and the support of current elected leaders, they'll have to work really hard to fundraise. And since the average house race in Hawaii is close to $40,000, that's a price tag that puts the even idea of serving out of public reach for many. Partial public funding is one way to level the playing field, but in Hawaii, the program hasn't been meaningfully updated in over 20 years. Costs have gone up, but the current expenditure limit for a house race is still under $24,000. It's not impossible. Uh, Rep. Poipoi is an example of someone that has won on that, but um, it's far from realistic. While there have been few successful candidates who have used the program, it's not the norm. In 2024, 25 candidates initially signed up to seek matching funds, but only 10 ended up using the program. Those six for County Council, two for OHA, and just two for the House. But we can do better than that. SB 345, it's a critical step towards making public financing a viable option for more candidates. Please pass this bill and take meaningful action to strengthen our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Evan Weber.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Uh, my name's Evan Weber. I am here uh, on behalf of our Hawaii and our members and supporters across the islands and also uh, we're a part of the Clean Elections Hawaii Coalition, which represents 40 different organizations, both of which are supportive of this bill and measure. Stand on our written testimony, but wanted to add, emphasize a couple of comments and figures which are included in that testimony. The main takeaway that I want to make sure legislators understand about what is critical about this piece of legislation and why, in our opinion, it is uh, stronger and superior uh, to HB 370, which previously passed out of the House, is that it raises the expenditure limit um, for candidates. To build off of Aria's point just now, when we talk to uh, candidates for office or even elected officials who considered the current partial public financing program but didn't end up using it, the reason that they normally don't use it is because by opting in to try to do what they want to do, which is rely less on private donations, they are immediately handicapping themselves by having to run, uh, using less funds than what they would be able, what is on average or necessary to win in a primary or the general election. So we tallied up the numbers from 2024 elections and the average figure was that a House primary winner took, uh, spent $37,000 um, in the primary. And the median, uh, which might be a more realistic figure, is $31,000. The average House seat for the 2026 election under HB 370 and the current program would only allot uh, about $23,000 um, per House district. So SB 345 raises this to 28,000, which gets a little bit closer to that uh, $31,000 median figure, and that's why we think this will enable more candidates to run. If um, the intent of the House is to expand partial public financing this year, whatever mechanism you use, I strongly encourage you to raise the expenditure limit uh, so that this actually becomes a viable program that fulfills our duties under the Hawaii Constitution. Um, and if you are concerned about cost, raise that expenditure limit, but you could also consider lowering the cap. Um, and if you were to lower it to around 35%, um, the, sorry, lowering the match. Um, so that's what's driving up a lot of the cost in this bill. And if you were to lower that um, match, you could uh, create a program that would cost significantly less, and the figures for that are um, in our testimony, and I'm happy to answer more questions because we have looked quite detailed at the numbers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, next, Joelle Edwards on Zoom.
Good afternoon, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. My name is Joelle Edwards. I live in Waikia on the island of Hawaii. Um, I'm here as a, a community advocate. I also am the Chair of the Hawaii Democratic Party. But today I'm speaking to you as a um, campaign manager on some campaigns that I worked on. And I stand behind my written testimony, but I really felt it was important to give oral testimony as well today. As a campaign manager for two grassroots campaigns here on Hawaii, we could have made progress that we did without the matching funds. With this bill, we will open up a new pool of candidates, most of whom are strong community advocates doing the hard work already, but the daunting task of securing funds to compete against big money is contributing to most people just not running at all or giving up. This bill is a significant step forward in reducing the influence of big money in our election process, and I really appreciate the time today. I appreciate both of your offices, Chair and Vice Chair, as I reached out um, late this morning to get in on Zoom, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, next, we have Kiani Rollins Fernandez on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and Honorable Committee members. I'm Maui County Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez. Mahalo for this opportunity to provide testimony in strong support of SB 345. Uh, increasing matching fund limit and amending the ratio uh, to a two to one uh, match are important ways to encourage others to run for office. For elections to be meaningful, the electorate must not only vote, but they must be given an opportunity to vote for candidates that are qualified and whose values and priorities align with the communities. Too many races, uh, candidates run unopposed, and that doesn't contribute to a healthy democracy. After Citizens United radically undermined the campaign finance system to give power to corporations and folks with billions of dollars that outweigh the vo- voice of our people, less community members are willing to run for office. Um, the corrupt system cited in the opposition testimony is, is, is caused by Citizens United. Citizens United is how candidates can receive millions of dollars of untraceable support to their campaign. In looking through the testimony, it seems that there is a misunderstanding that public funding would enable candidates uh, to not be obligated to the influence of big money interests who fund their campaigns. Having a robust funding program enables, a public funding program enables candidates to be independent, uh, to be obligated to their voters instead of their donors. Uh, so I urge you to uh, support SB 345. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. And finally, Mary Healy on Zoom, not present. We have a total of 89 testimonies in support, 42 in opposition. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Cameron?
I should be in there again. Uh, Cameron Hurt, State Director, Common Cause Hawaii. We'll stand on our written testimony. And in summary, um, truly, there's nothing I can say that you guys haven't heard before. You guys have been with this issue of campaign public financing since, some of you, since the genesis of your career in, in service in this capacity. We're trying. We're, we're trying. We're giving you multiple variations of campaign financing bills. Please candidly give us something. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, que, yes. Come on up, please.
No, I'm Terry Armbruster, and I oppose SB 4, um, 345 because in a, public financing, that means you're taking our tax dollars for, what if it's for candidates that we don't want? So why are you using our tax dollars to pay for candidates? I, I understand it's, it's hard to run for office, but um, that's part of the obligation is, is getting their own financing, thing like that. And uh, I don't think you should be using our tax dollars for candidates that we may um, not want to vote for. So I, I, that's why I oppose it and ask you to reconsider what, how you're going to do this financing and look for other avenues and can be voluntary and other things, but not automatically use our tax dollars for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Yes, please. Come on up.
Aloha, my name's Margaret Mejia from Hawaii Christian Coalition, and we oppose SB 345. Um, I don't have a written testimony right here in front of me. Someone's working on it right now, so I can have it emailed to all of you. Um, I don't know how long they're going to take, but hopefully in the next five minutes. But yeah, we oppose SB 345. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Michael Goloyuk?
There we go. Thank you. Uh, Michael Goloyuk Jr., President of Private Work, key in pronouns. Uh, we stand in strong support of this measure. I wasn't going to testify on this, but we use tax dollars for things I don't agree with all the time, or other people don't agree with all the time. And this is, uh, the reason we definitely do need public financing is, has already been well-e, well eloquently put out, there you go, that's a good way, eloquently put out there more than I could do right this moment, but we definitely do need this. Um, so we encourage you to pass this. Help us, help, and let's give everybody a chance that wants to, that can meet those thresholds, uh, be able to run for office. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members?
I have a question.
Yes. Representative Russo.
For Ms. Mejia, sorry, I'm not trying to pick on you, but I'm, I'm genuinely curious. Um, you, you mentioned that you are in opposition, but you didn't explain why.
Um, yeah, I don't have an explanation right now, other than, well, I guess I could say, yeah, we're against taxpayer dollars paying for any campaign. Yeah, I guess that would be the main reason. But there's other reasons, too.
Okay. I, I look forward to reading your testimony.
Okay, thanks.
Chair.
Yes.
I have a question for Campaign Spending Commission. For Executive Director Nizumi-Nietal, I should know the answer to this question, but uh, I don't, so I'll ask it. Does our Constitution require that for the partial public financing, we have to fund all of the offices identified in the statute?
It just provides that there must be a, a partial public funding program, and of course, it's subject to there being funds. Um, so we have a program for it, and our bill, um, House Bill uh, 370, which fortunately, due to your committee is still alive, um, is, in our opinion, a humble opinion, um, more affordable than this type of programming. We have no, we, we, we are totally in support of partial public funding. It's a program that we must run. Um, but this one, in our, in our opinion, is very expensive. And, and my apologies to the commit, I'm sorry?
Can I, uh, I'd like to, I have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Okay, so my follow-up question is, um, Ms. Castillo, Stiel, um, provided testimony that in the last cycle, only 12 people, there are 14 people availed themselves of the partial public financing. In the previous election cycle, how many gubernatorial candidates availed themselves of the partial financing?
Um, that's a great question. I don't have that data in front of me right now. Um, it is all available on our website, um, as far as how many people applied for it, how many qualified, and who won. But of course, you probably know, a historic number was Governor But of course, you probably know, a historic number was Governor Ege received public funding, partial public funding, and won that election.
And he also would explain how it was a very difficult process and program for him to navigate as well. Okay, thank you. I'm just curious, because I think if we have the data that shows that some of these offices are actually not taking advantage of it in a way that we could maybe not fund those and be more generous so that we can fund and in fact build up a pipeline of candidates at the other levels of elected office. That's just my comment. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, thank you. Just a question for you, Ms. Izumi Nita. The $2.2 million that's in the fund, where did that money come from?
That's a trust fund that part of the money comes from the $3 or $6 tax checkoff. And again, we also have in our website have data as to how much we receive every year, and it comes from escheats, which are statutorily mandated remedies based on some violations. For instance, escheats. There are also some candidates who just escheat their balance because they want to terminate their committees. So it's a compilation of different sources, but at the end of the day, it's a trust fund that is grouped with other trust funds, and the investment return comes back to the trust fund, but it's not a large amount of money.
At this time, though, there's no general tax fund
No.
that's in that trust fund? No general, no, there's no, there's no general appropriations that go into that trust fund?
And no tax benefit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Representative Russo.
Question for our Hawaii. So I really appreciated the data analysis that you folks did, and for members of the public who are not looking at what we're looking at, essentially what you did is you look at, you looked at SB 345, and you did two kinds of scenarios. One was at a 20% increase in expenditure limits and up to 67% match, and then the second was 30% increase in expenditure limits and up to 35% match. And then you looked at how that would affect the overall cost, and you broke it down by office, which was very nice. Thank you so much. And then, but I'm wondering, was this data and this possible set of scenarios also offered to the Senate? Did they have a chance to deliberate on this possibility?
This data was not. So this data was created in response to the observation that Director, or that the Campaign Spending Commission made about their projected costs. We were curious about what was driving that and wanted to look into it more, so we modeled it out, and our numbers matched their estimates pretty closely, and we're happy to share them with the committee for, you know, for further deliberation should some bill move forward. But, so we didn't, we did not share it with the Senate, and so that did not factor into the way that they passed it out, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Representative Todd.
Thank you. Very briefly for the Director for Campaign Spending.
Oh, oh, good. I'll just swallow it down.
Any other questions or attempts at asking questions? Nope.
I learned my lesson.
Ask early. Ask early. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the members for their questions, and thank you to the testifiers for your testimony. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 1032, Senate Draft 2, relating to campaign finance. This prohibits foreign entities and foreign-influenced business entities from making contributions, expenditures, electioneering communications, or donations for election purposes. And it goes on, but that's the essence of it. First up, we have, one moment, Candace Park, Attorney General. A whole reason you came here.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. There are, this bill requires two certifications to be made under penalty of perjury. However, a false certification in either of those events would not meet the requirements of the offense of perjury. So we have provided language which would correct both of those problems, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. We received, oh, I don't know, Kristin Izumi Nita from Campaign Spending Commission in support, but she's not available. Next, we have Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action in support.
Aloha again, Aria Julia Castillo, Reclaiming Democracy Program Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. HOPA strongly supports SB 1030, a bill that protects Hawaii's elections from foreign influence. Our democracy should be shaped by the people of Hawaii, not outside of forces trying to control it. This bill strengthens existing laws by stopping foreign owners' business from making campaign contributions and requires businesses to certify that no foreign ownership is there before donating. And I think the most important part of this bill ensures that political ads clearly disclose the top contributors and the sources of their funding. Please support this important measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've also received late written testimony from Mattson. Are they here? No. With comments. So we received a total 89 testimony in support, one in opposition, and two with comments. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Yes, please, Cameron, come on up.
And this one, I know I submitted, too, so, yeah. We love this bill, so we support it, of course. More than anything, we're going to stand on our written testimony. Listen, the oldest democracy in the modern world has a right to protect and safeguard its privileges for its citizens. What makes us the oldest democracy in the world is the ability to vote and protecting that and making sure that's safeguarded and protected for the right of all citizens and that we get to have the loudest voice in our elections is critical and vital. So for that reason, of course, everything we wrote down, we strongly support this measure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1032? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 51, Senate Draft 1, relating to public financing for candidates to elected office. This measure establishes a comprehensive system of public financing for all candidates seeking election to state and county public offices in the state of Hawaii to begin the 2028 general election year. First up, we have testimony from the Campaign Spending Commission, not present. Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action.
Aloha, Aria Julia Castillo, the Reclaiming Democracy Program Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. Thank you. We stand in strong support of SB 51, establishing publicly funded elections in Hawaii. On August 11, 2024, we woke up to a headline that become all too familiar. Hawaii saw the worst voter turnout on Saturday of any primary since statehood. This is the norm. Hawaii has a low voter turnout, and it's created a cycle of political apathy that we have the power to break. When the same candidates run unopposed year after year, people lose faith and that their vote even matters or will make a difference. And when their voter turnout stays low, new candidates look at the numbers and ask, why even try? The cycle of disengagement is so bad for democracy. A healthy democracy thrives on competition. When the voters have real choices, it leads for better debates, new ideas, and elected officials who are more accountable to their communities. But right now, that's not happening. This year, 28 House incumbents had no primary challengers, and 15 races had no general opponent. This is not a competitive democracy. That is a broken system. One of the biggest reasons new candidates don't step up is money. Running for office is very expensive, and without personal wealth or big donors, too many qualified people, especially working class, cannot afford to do so. And that means that we miss out on having teachers, small business owners, firefighters, nurses, bringing real-life experience into the government. If we want a democracy that works for everyone, we need to make sure that we all have a fair shot at running for office. Publicly funded elections would help break down these barriers, strengthen voter participation, and ensure a government truly represents the people. Please support SB 51. Let's give voters a choice and restore the faith in democracy.
Thank you. Mr. Evan Weber.
Aloha again today, and also, this is my third time in the last three years testifying on this bill. So some of you have already heard our spiel on this before, but we are in strong support of SB 51. We think comprehensive public financing is the way to go in terms of achieving the twin goals of more equal representation in our democracy and helping to lessen the influence of private money on our elections and thus our politics. When this bill was deferred last year, there were a number of questions that were raised, and while we support the bill as it stands, we tried to address some of those questions and concerns that we heard during that hearing and in the year since then. And so I just want to highlight those for your consideration. Many of the concerns around SB 51, as were raised about SB 345, relate to cost, and one of those concerns that also come up in the testimony that was shared is how this bill relates to the county elections and the counties. In the conversations that we've had in the Clean Elections Hawaii Coalition in the last year, we think that if cost is a concern, removing the county races from the inclusion in this program would be one way to address costs while not diminishing the overall impact of public financing in our systems, given that Kauai County and Maui County council races are at large, and those people do have competitive funds from our current program. Another thing Rep. Bellotti raised is that the key driver in these programs generally is the top-of-the-ticket races. So if legislators are looking to reduce the cost of this, they could remove the governor or lieutenant governor races, or even some of the mayor or prosecuting attorney races. Third concern that has been raised in the past is around revenue, and one easy solution for that, that wouldn't do anything to infringe on people's taxpayer contributions that they're not interested in making, is to switch our current way that we fund the campaign election fund from an opt-in system to an opt-out system. Our calculations is that this would provide around $2.5 million of consistent revenue to the campaign fund, assuming about an 85% participation rate, which is conservative. And then, last but not least, Rep. Harness, you actually raised what I thought was a thoughtful question about, I think it was you, about the way that the qualifying contributions are apportioned in this legislation, and they are more arbitrary than our current partial public financing system, which is based off of registered voters in a district. So you could consider using that as a metric if that really is a concern to legislators, and using about 1% of that number would roughly match up with the current apportionments that are in there. So hope that we've provided some options to address your concerns, and there also is draft amendment language should you choose to keep this bill alive and move it forward in our testimony. Mahalo.
Thanks very much. Dave Mullenix on Zoom.
Aloha. Dave Mullenix, representing our evolution, Hawaii's 5,000 members and supporters statewide. I thank the committee for hearing this legislation, and I know this is an excellent committee to hear this because you all understand this very, very well. Since the United decision funding by special interests for political candidates has skyrocketed, studies show that 90% of candidates who spend the most money win their elections. According to Pew study, 90% of legislation passed in Congress is exactly what corporations support. Only 10% of congressional legislation that is passed currently is in the best interest of the majority of our electorate. In the most recent election, we had a battle between Donald Trump's billionaires versus Kamala Harris's billionaires on who would end up being our next president. We don't have to look much further than the White House Oval Office, where billionaires sit, where billionaires sit next to President of the United States advising him to see how big money is having undue influence on our democracy. Currently, there's little chance of fairly addressing this problem in Congress, so it falls on the state legislatures to ensure we have fair elections. If we're to ensure we have a government of, by, and for the people, then it is essential to prevent big money having undue influence on our elections, and passing this legislation be very important. Thank you so much for your time. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Next, Brett Colbus on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Committee members. I strongly oppose this bill. Implementing a full public funding system requires significant financial resources from taxpayers, and not everyone may agree with their tax money supporting political candidates, especially if they disagree with the candidates or the parties being funded. Managing a public funding can be a complex bureaucratic nightmare. It requires a well-designed system to ensure fairness and prevent misuse of the funds, which can be challenging to implement effectively. We already know the Campaign Spending Commission does not have the power, the manpower currently to man the, to really use the partial funding we have already. Even if public funding outside spending, even with public funding outside spending by independent groups can still dominate the political landscape, potentially undermining the benefits of public funding. With these, with these reasons, I strongly urge you to vote no on SB 51.
Thank you very much. Kehani Rollins Fernandez on Zoom.
Aloha again, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and Honorable Committee members. I'm Maui County Councilmember Kehani Rollins Fernandez. Mahalo for this opportunity to provide testimony in strong support of SB 51, establishing a publicly funded campaign program. When asking folks frustrated with their elected officials if they would run, most folks won't choose to run, as many are intimidated by the sheer amount of funds candidates backed by big money get. I could ask someone off the street if they donated to candidates' campaigns, and more likely than not, they didn't. Most people who voted for me did not donate to my campaign. 27,172 people voted for me, a fraction of those donated to my campaign. Donating to campaigns is just not something that folks generally do. So what does this lead to? Big money who fully understand the potential of controlling government by paying for the campaigns of candidates that will pass laws in their favor. Less people are willing to run, particularly grassroots candidates committed to people willing to stand against big money hurting the working-class people. And it continues to erode the faith and confidence the public has in government. We must establish systems that encourage more community members to participate in government. This would provide funding to candidates that I both support and don't support, and that is how democracy works. I support a system that enables the community to have the ability to vote for as robust a candidate pool as possible. So I urge you to pass SB 51. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. And finally, Mary Healy on Zoom, not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 51? Yes, please, come on up.
Aloha. My name is Margaret Mejia, and I'm representing Hawaii Christian Coalition. We have 35,000 members, and I represent about 130,000 people. We are against this bill. We strongly oppose this bill because it would raise partisan concerns, also misuse of funds, and, sorry, I've got some notes here. Taxpayer dollars would fund all political campaigns, and private donations would be banned, so we're against this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Yes, no? Nope. Any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much for the testimony. Let's move on to the last measure for testimony, and that is Senate Bill 1508, Senate Draft 1, relating to statutory revision, amending, or repealing various provisions of the Hawaii revised statutes or the session laws of Hawaii for the purposes of correcting errors and references, clarifying language, or deleting obsolete or unnecessary provisions. And we have with us from the Legislative Reference Bureau, Mr. John Morsy on Zoom. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair. John Morsy, Legislative Reference Bureau. This is our annual statutory revision bill, where we address errors in the law, obsolete language, omissions, et cetera. The Bureau stands on our written testimony in support, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions? I have one question. John, did you happen to find out if there were any, you looked over this with a fine-tooth comb, made sure that it's, no mistakes?
You know I did.
Okay, just verifying that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Oh, yes. Representative Mizu.
Thank you, Chair. I understand you did a lot of good work, and you went over it with a really good comb. I'm just curious, does, besides LRB, does anyone else do a subsequent review to confirm the changes are all in order?
Yeah, so before we get it introduced, we actually send it over to the Department of the Attorney General, and they get back to us if they have any concerns. And on this one, they didn't have any concerns.
That's awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Thank you. It's very, very detailed work that you got to do. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, John. Appreciate your work. Okay, that's all of the testimony. Just so everyone knows, if you weren't here at the very beginning, we had the testimony, we heard the testimony on Senate Bill 1337 relating to stadium authority, and we also received the testimony on Senate Bill 289 relating to ethics administrative fines. We heard those at the very top of the agenda. And there's written test, the written testimony is in your packets for those two measures. Okay. Let's go to the top of the agenda for decision-making. Okay, Senate Bill 176, Senate Draft 1 relating to recons. On this, I would like to defect the effective date and move this along for conference committee Any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 176, SD 1, with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Baladi.
Aye.
Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Hashem excused. Representative Kahaloa excused. Representative Peruso.
Aye.
Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Garcia is excused. Representative Shimizu.
With reservations, please.
With reservations for Representative Shimizu. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 311, Senate Draft 1, proposing an amendment to the Hawaii State Constitution regarding the freedom of speech. On this, I would propose that we move this forward with a defective date, a defective, I want to defect the effective date. I would recommend that on page four, lines four to 11, I want to make sure that the ballot question is just the ballot question, not the context around it. So I would propose deleting language from the ballot question specifying that the constitutional amendment would take effect if the Supreme Court of the US overturns, Congress overrides, or an amendment to the US Constitution validates Citizens United versus Federal Elections Commission and Buckley versus Valeo. This language is not actually reflected in the amendment, and I think it would be better suited to put it into the voter information guide so that the voters would understand why you're voting on this and when it would come into effect. And then I'd like to make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. So defect the date, make the changes that I just suggested, and technical amendments. Questions or concerns, members? Representative Shimizu.
Chair, I have concerns, and I'm going to be voting no.
Sure. Appreciate that. Any other comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 311, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representatives Hashem, Kahaloa, and Garcia as now present, and Representative Cochran as excused, are there any nos or reservations? I got Representative Shimizu's no. Any additional?
No vote.
Okay. No vote for Representative Garcia. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The next measure, Senate Bill 780 relating to elections. I think that there's some challenges with this bill. The bill's proposal to establish time limits for the disposition of judicial proceedings is very likely unconstitutional in violation of Article 6, Section 1 of the Hawaii State Constitution. So I'm concerned about that. There is also, there is already a process to challenge the inclusion or exclusion of candidates that's in our statutes right now. And so I don't think that this is a bill that I would like to advance. So my recommendation is to defer. Senate Bill 780. Questions or concerns, members? Not, thank you. Move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 1030. On this measure, I would like to defect the effective date and move this forward to conference. Questions or concerns, members? Just to defect the date. If no questions, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 1030, SD 2, with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any nos or reservations?
No vote.
A no for Representative Garcia.
Reservations.
Reservations for Representative Shimizu. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 1225, proposing an amendment to Article 17, Section 3 of the Hawaii Constitution to specify that the standard for voter approval of a constitutional amendment proposed by the legislature is a majority of all the votes tallied upon the question. And that means that would not include blank, spoiled, and overvotes in determining whether a majority was reached. Personally, I've always thought that we should just vote, it should just be yes or no, and those are the ones that counted. So I would like to move this forward, but I realize that not everyone thinks the same way I do. So I'm going to propose that we defect the effective date, and we need to make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And I'd like to reword the ballot question so it doesn't include all the background information that's more suited for the voter information guide. So the proposed ballot question would read as follows. Quote, "Under the existing language of the Constitution of the State of Hawaii, amendments to the Constitution of the State of Hawaii that are proposed by the legislature are only effective if approved at a general election by a majority of all votes tallied upon the question, this majority constituting at least 50% of the total vote cast at the election. Shall the Constitution of the State of Hawaii be amended to change that standard for voter approval of constitutional amendments that are proposed by the legislature by removing the requirement that the majority of all votes tallied upon the question must constitute at least 50% of the total vote cast at the election?" That's what I would propose to have in there. So we'd also make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Clear as mud, right? Okay. Defect the date, technical amendments, and ballot question as I've just described. And move this on to finance. Questions or concerns, members?
Sure.
Yes?
Thank you, Chair. I will be voting no on this. Hawaii has a low voter turnout. It's been historical that way. This last election, it did increase, which is a good thing. My concern is that even amongst those who do decide to vote, which is often below 40% of our actual electorate, many of them leave blank ballots or votes on the questions for conems. And so we're going to be allowing potentially 15% to 20% of Hawaii's population to amend the state constitution. I just don't think that's a good thing, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Representative Shimizu.
I have concerns also, and I'll be voting no.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 1225, with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused, noting the no votes of Representative Garcia and Shimizu. Are there any additional nos or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 1515, Senate Draft 1. I, if you read the testimony from the judiciary, they respectfully oppose this measure, and I think it's compelling testimony, and so I recommend we defer. Senate Bill 1515, Senate Draft 1. Questions or concerns, members? If not, we'll move on. Senate Bill 1202. I'd like to move this forward. It's already allowed if anyone asks for the Campaign Spending Commission to say this, but they said it'd be good to have it in statute, so let's do it. So I recommend we move this forward as is. Clean date, on to finance. Questions or concerns, members? Not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 1202, as is. Representative Cochran is excused. Are there any nos or reservations?
No vote.
No vote, please.
Okay. No votes for Representative Garcia and Shimizu. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 345, Senate Draft 1. I agree with the Campaign Spending Commission that the Campaign Spending Commission's bill, House Bill 370, which we approved in the House as House Draft 2, is the preferable vehicle for this. It is a cost, it is in our, in our constitution to have a partial public financing. I would like to better fund that, and I think their recommendations to do so are the best ones for us to proceed. Even in these times where I expect that it's going to, right now, the Council on Revenues is having their debate, and I wouldn't be surprised if they come back and suggest that the projected tax estimates are going to be lower, so we won't be able to fund all the appropriation bills that we've moved on in addition to the budget. So I would like to stick with what we had previously recommended, and we were able to move through finance and send to the Senate. So I would propose that we insert the language from House Bill 370, HD 2, into this measure and move it on as a House Draft 1 to finance. Questions or concerns, members? Yes?
So, just to confirm, though, our position in the House bill doesn't raise the expenditure limit.
That's correct.
It does not.
It was not, it was not suggested by Campaign Spending Commission, nor was any of this brought up in any of the testimony when we heard the bill earlier. I appreciate that it was brought up now, but in this testimony. But I want to go with the House position that we had previously passed, and if this moves through finance, we can take it to conference and we can perhaps address some of those issues then. So I want to just stick with the House position that we had previously passed.
Okay. But I think acknowledging that, I mean, I think what we heard in the testimony is that we, the expenditure, raising the expenditure limit actually doesn't necessarily affect the, it could affect the bottom line, but it does make it a stronger and more robust program. And that, I guess, Chair, would it be safe to say, because we've heard it here, even though we're passing the House position, it is something that could be the topic of discussion in conference?
Sure. Well, I mean, it's, it's relevant to bring up in testimony before finance.
Okay.
Because this bill goes to finance next.
Okay.
I'm curious about something.
No, is that, any other questions or comments?
So I guess just in, in past practice of the, of the way bills have moved, because it's been raised in the discussions now, but even though we don't adopt it, is, it is in kind of the milieu of the options that we could consider, even though we don't adopt it here in this, in this?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we received it in testimony today. I don't want to include it in the Standing Committee report, but I think it certainly should be brought up by the advocates in finance, and that it could be considered then. And I think that's very, that's very appropriate.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, sure. Representative Peruso.
And I'm sorry, I just haven't been simultaneously tracking effectively enough. And I'm wondering if the Senate will have similar feelings about our House Bill 370, if they will also seek to replace our content with theirs. Is that, have you had those conversations yet? Or is it too premature?
I don't know. The Senator and I spoke, and we've talked about this even before session started, and he was going to propose his bills, and we were going to move with a bill that I thought the House could support. And, and then we would take it as far as we can take it. Because we're all, I mean, I think both the Senate Judiciary and the House Judiciary would like to see an improvement on our partial public financing. And I, since we got support from House Finance to move forward with House Bill 370, HD 2, before the change in Council on Revenue's projections, I want to stick with that.
Okay.
And see if we can take this all the way to the finish line in conference committee. Question, other questions or concerns? Representative Shimizu.
Chair, thank you, Chair. I feel that promoting candidates and taking the money out of the influence, out of the equation is important, and I agree that, you know, there is concerns that taxpayers will be paying for maybe an opposition candidate, but hopefully that would equal itself out. So I think the benefit of promoting candidates and taking money out of the equation is, in my opinion, a greater cause, and I will be voting yes, but with reservations.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote. This is Senate Bill 345, SD 1. We're going to do an HD 1, inserting the language from House Bill 370, HD 2, into this measure. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on Senate Bill 345, SD 1, with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused, noting with reservations vote from Representative Shimizu. Are there any nos or reservations additional?
No vote.
No vote for Representative Garcia. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 1032, Senate Draft 2 relating to campaign finance. This is the one that prohibits foreign entities and foreign-influenced business entities from making contributions, expenditures, electionary communications, or donations for election purposes. It's already in state law that foreign nationals are not allowed to make political contributions. This expands this to foreign entities and foreign-influenced business entities. I'd like to move this bill forward and make some changes to it, so House Draft 1. I'd like to defect the effective date. I would like to make a correction on page five, line one. The word "two" should be changed to "six," since that is when there would be a situation where no foreign investor has 1% and is covered under paragraph one. So that's more of a technical correction. I'd also have to make some other technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. I'd like to adopt the amendments from the Attorney General testimony, and also the amendments from the Campaign Spending Commission's testimony, and move this forward. Questions or concerns, members? Representative Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. I think we are in a global multinational economy at this point, and this would be hard to define and interpret and maybe even enforce, so I will be voting no.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB 1032, SD 2, with amendments. Representative Cochran is excused. A no vote for Representative Shimizu. Are there any additional nos or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, Senate Bill 51, Senate Draft 1. I want to acknowledge the hard work of the advocates who continue to work on this, and Senator Rhodes who keeps on advocating for this. We are advancing our partial public financing measure in Senate Bill 345, Senate Draft 1, and we had previously moved it out in House Bill 370, House Draft 2. That's to strengthen what's already required under our Hawaii State Constitution. I'd like to get that first, and then try to get that to be something that more people participate in, and we increase the amounts. And so I would propose that we are not at a point where we would be able to move forward with Senate Bill 51, Senate Draft 1, in part due to cost, and also because I would like to succeed in the partial public financing measure that we're advancing, and not move forward to measures that are really competing. So my recommendation is to defer Senate Bill 51, Senate Draft 1. I'm open to comments or concerns from members if they want to speak up. Please, go ahead.
I'll speak up. So this is a measure that I actually think has the opportunity to change fundamentally and transformatively politics because of the huge influence of, and the huge negative influence of corporate funds. I was actually an advocate for this measure long before I came to the legislature, and actually, when I was almost straight out of college. And so I've been an advocate of clean elections for over 28 years when I was first introduced into politics as a campaign spending commissioner. So I understand what you're doing, Chair, and I do understand the money, the money aspect of it. I would just say, and make one last comment, this is the kind of bill that I would stick around and continue to run for office, to make sure this gets enacted. So for anyone who doesn't want me in office, it's past this bill. It's past this bill. But otherwise, on that note of levity, I understand what you're doing, Chair. I just, again, as a supporter of over 28 years for this measure, this is, again, the kind of reform that is innovative and truly transformative. And so I understand where we're going now, and I do really hope that we can pass a very robust partial public financing system, because that can also be a game changer, as we've seen candidates come in, and through that, some very excellent candidates coming through that system. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other comments or concerns? Anybody else? I do want to note for the members that we did move out a very strong bill to prevent, prohibit any state or county contractors or grantees, their principals, and their immediate family members from making contributions as a way to try to address that issue that you spoke to. So we are moving that forward because I agree- So we are moving that forward because I agree we need to address that. Other comments or concerns on my recommendation to defer Senate Bill 51, Senate Draft 1? Now is the time. If you wanna make any statements. Okay. Thank you. Let's move on. Senate Bill 289 relating to ethics administrative fines. This is a clean bill. I think we should advance it as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 289, as is. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any nos or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 1508, Senate Draft 1. This is the annual revision bill that we need to do. Legislative Reference Bureau has prepared this and gone over it with a fine-tooth comb. John Morsey has worked hard on this with his team, and I recommend we move this out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 1508, SD 1, as is. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any nos or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Last bill, Senate Bill 1337, Senate Draft 1 relating to the stadium authority. We need to make one correction. On page eight, line seven, the word, quote, "non-voting," end quote, should not be underlined because this is already existing language in the statute. And we, I would like to amend the effective date to be upon approval. So this would be a clean bill, and we'd move this along. They've been trying to get this through for three years now, so let's see if we can make this happen. So, correct that one. Not, "non-voting" should not be underlined, page eight, line seven, and then change effective date to be upon approval. With that, HD 1. Questions or concerns, members? If not, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on Senate Bill 1337, SD 1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any nos or reservations?
No vote.
A no vote for Representative Garcia. Recommendation is adopted.
Thanks. There being no further business before us today, we are adjourned.